Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, he was the one who was...
I thought saying his name would be self-explanatory.
Yeah. But actually, once it was resolved.
Yeah, I think there's something about...
Tear it down.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the zoning board meeting of January tenth. I'm the vice chair, Mike DeVeaux. Next to me is member Mr. O'Brien, member Mr. Chin, member Mr. Himmel, member Mr. Frankel. From Inspectorial Services, Jim Anderson is here, and our clerk, Mr. Murphy. If you have a cellphone, if you can turn it off or put on vibrate. If you're going to be talking to each other, if you can do it outside because it's noisy in here. We don't have a PA system. When you come up and testify, we have to record your voice on this little machine over here. So make sure you speak loud enough so you can do that. Now, if anyone's going to be testifying today, I need you to stand up and raise your right hand and swear on the oath. Anybody going to talk today? Or the guys in the back are not going to talk today? You swear to tell the truth. I hope you got the truth. I hope you got...
I do.
Thank you. Uh, let's see here. First thing we want to say is like a motion to waive the reading of the previous hearing's minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes of the meeting of December thirteenth, two thousand sixteen.
In favor, I?
Aye.
I oppose?
Aye.
We have to go into executive session this evening for a few minutes. So the reason we're going to do this is we're discussing a strategy for litigation that's come up against us. And I have to give up the rope hold vote to see if people agree with us. Mr. O'Brien?
In favor, both?
Yes, in favor of going into executive session.
Mr. Chin?
In favor.
Mr. Himmel?
In favor.
Frankel?
In favor.
I'm in favor. So we will be back here in a few minutes. No more than ten. Counsel, do you want to come with us?
Yeah, I don't think so. I don't think there's anything major. But okay, so we're going to go. Okay, so you're good. I thought you were going to go off and go through that weird picture. You know? Like I might have messes off that screen saying work two days. Plus, I want to look at the location of the building to explain myself.
What?
Plus, I want to look at the location of the building to explain myself.
Hey, Jim, can you please...
Is Rob...
I'm pretty sure, I know we have a seminar. What's that?
What's that seminar?
The seminar.
I'm just going to move it back to the island.
Okay. Good.
Ooh.
Okay, thanks.
Did you hear the audience? Okay. First I guess. Okay.
It's a good issue.
Let's go. Thank you, Janet.
Okay. I call the meeting back to the board. The whole business tonight, case sixteen dash zero six four, Quinlong for a variance finding to change the existing single-family home to a two-family home on the premises number forty-eight Newton Avenue in Quincy. I had a, I've been asked to delay this for another couple of weeks. And so... Over a month. So we're still trying to give you a motion to extend it here until February twenty-eighth. Actually, I should actually do this. Oh, we should make a motion.
Right, right.
Okay, and then we have to...
Right, okay. Mr. Chairman, regarding case number sixteen dash zero six four, Quinlong for a variance finding to change the existing single-family home to a two-family home on the premises number forty-eight Newton Avenue in Quincy. That's where it is. I'd like to make a motion to reschedule the requested hearing for February twenty-fourth.
Second? Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, sorry.
Second? A motion seen, in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Aye.
Case number sixteen, sixteen dash zero five eight, cost of property development LLC for a variance construct, a sixty-unit multi-family residential building on the premises number twenty-three and thirty-one Bridge Street, Quincy, is the applicant, or their counsel, here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the boards. For the record, my name is Edward Fleming. I'm an attorney here in Quincy, at Paulist. I represent Boston Property Development LLC tonight regarding the property twenty-three and thirty-one Bridge Street in downtown. This property is owned by business C. And as the board may remember, we were here a number of months ago. It seems like this topic's been going on forever. And I think we first appeared before the board on September thirteenth, at which time we made a full presentation of the proposal. So I won't bore you with the full presentation all over again. But what I would like to do tonight, if I may, is spend a couple of minutes just giving you the highlights of the proposal and then turn it over to Rob, the senior of M Bar, to talk to you really specifically about the modifications and revisions that have been made to the plans. And that's really the purpose of this meeting tonight, is to share with you the modifications and revisions. But really quickly, we are here before the board asking for dimensional relief regarding minimum lot area, building height, and some building setbacks. This is a very unusually shaped parcel of land on Bridge Street, as you can see by the highlighted red area on the plan. End of the parography and the shape of the site creates a hardship that makes full compliance with the ordinance very difficult and burdensome. Boston Property Development, which is a Quincy-based development company, which as you know, was involved in the building of nine ninety-nine Hancock Street, which is the old Temple Beth El building, as well as the building across the street on Mary Hong Road, where they converted an existing office building to residential units. And Boston Property was located for some, for some time right on Greenleaf Street, but still remains in the city of Quincy. And Peter Blough, their principal, is a Quincy resident as well. Boston Property Development is actually proposing to construct on this site a sixty-unit residential development. It will include two levels of parking underneath the building that provides for approximately eighty-one spaces, along with parking across the street that will provide for additional parking for the building, approximately one point five spaces per unit. As I indicated, we made a full presentation of the proposal at that, at the last meeting, so I won't bore you with the details of this moving forward. What I would like to talk with you about is that on September thirteenth, when we appeared, concerns were raised by this board about, about a few different things. One, the board wanted, before you felt comfortable to vote, that you wanted the planning board process, which is also a permitting granting agency in this development process, to be further along in their review. And as you know, during the site plan review before the planning board, the planning board retains independent engineers, peer review contractors to review all of the applicant's materials, including the drainage, the architecture, traffic, and the like. And that process has been ongoing since we filed back in August. And to date, as will be reported, or has been reported to the board, the planning department is prepared to make a recommendation on this matter. They've fully completed their peer review of the development and are satisfied that the applicant has responded to all of the concerns that have been raised by not only the peer review consultants in the city departments, but also by the neighbors. The other concern that was raised by the board at the time was, was to ensure that the National Park Service was satisfied with the proposal. At the time, if you remember, Marion Peak actually appeared and testified before this body and raised questions and concerns about the development. She, she raised concerns about what the visual impact of the development would be on the national park site. And, and this board wanted to make sure that Marion Peak was comfortable that appropriate modifications and changes had been made to the plans. And then the third thing that the board raised was concerns about the MBTA. Because of its close proximity to the MBTA site, the board asked that we reach out to the MBTA to make sure that there's been communication with the MBTA, that there's no concern expressed by them. I can tell this board tonight, as I said a moment ago, the planning department has completed its review and is prepared to make a recommendation. Since the meeting, we've had numerous meetings with Marion Peak. John Hanson from the development team and Chris have met with Marion Peak on a regular basis. And as a result of those meetings, and also meetings with the Hospital Hill Association, significant modifications and revisions have been made to the plans. Specifically, dealing and addressing concerns that Marion Peak and the Hospital Hill Association raised, which was the, the visual impact of the residential building on the National Park Service. And Rob will talk about those detailed changes in a moment. Jim Burke is also here to talk about some drainage improvements that have been made, which is also a significant improvement to the development proposal, as you'll see. And then lastly, we reached out to the MBTA, and MBTA is well aware of the proposal. They've been provided with the plans, the development plans, and the MBTA requested, and we, we applied for a permit with the MBTA, which they're, and we've had ongoing discussions with them as they review this, this matter and the issuance of a permit. So a permit will be issued by the MBTA, and we'll continue to work with them and comply with their concerns. The, the MBTA will not be interfered with in any way during the construction of the proposal, and they've been assured of that. But they'll monitor things moving forward, and they'll have the appropriate contact to, to ensure there's no disturbance to the line, because it's relied upon by so many in Quincy. So I'm not going to, I'm not going to step on Rob's toes with regard to the, to the changes. And I'll let Rob talk about those things in a moment. But we feel as though we've made the changes and the significant changes in the, in the review that's been undertaken by the planning board, and the peer review has been really in-depth. And we're comfortable that this matter is prepared and before at this stage, and we would ask that the board consider doing so tonight. So without anything further from me, I can turn it over to Rob, to let Rob kind of walk through that. And then I'd like to ask Jim Burke to talk a little bit about the drainage, and then we can open this up the question and talk with him about that.
Excellent. I'm Rob Al Savio from the Burke studio. So just to orient everybody, that's the site we're talking about today. The T MBK lines that are at, and this is the Adam site here, and as you'll see when we went through, we spent a lot of time with them, their view back to the subject property. So slight enlargement. So again, Adam's site here, Bridge Street, and the unusually shaped property. View for both. So this is where we were back in July with the building. This view is sort of up in the air, obviously, looking towards the building on the side that faces most directly toward, cross towards the Adam site. It was at this point a five-story building, it was four stories above the ground level, which had mostly apartment on it, until you got back there. So again, here was where we are. After significant meetings with the Park Service, a lot of view studies, what you would see of the building from their property, we decided best to cut back this portion of the fifth floor of the building. So where it was all the way out to this point here, we cut it back and only left the fifth story back, pushed back further from the perimeter of the facade. So that's where we were previously. So this is the view that we had put together to share with the Park Service based on the original design, the design that existed back in July, showing the extent of the building and what you would see from their property. As we went back, we modified the design, we went to redo the, the view, and they asked for us to step back further, get your back, get your back almost against the house itself. And you can see how much has been cut down now from the view. So that entire fifth floor from this point going out is now removed. We actually were able to drop the building a little bit as well, overall height. So again, just the view, again, this piece has been removed, and this is what was there previously. The remainder of the project remains as it was, is one, is now one level of subterranean parking, so we have eighty-three parking spaces on the site currently. And the first floor, parking here, we could actually pick up a few more parking spaces along the backside of the corridor as well. And this remains some residential units, some common area for the development. No change here, for the most part, we still have sixty units, as I mentioned. The layout, pretty much like this, we're working on the material layouts now. And this is where you'll see where the building previously had been. So we took out about three thousand square feet on the fifth floor of the building by getting rid of this area here. We can probably go down to Jim's work now.
Good evening, I'm Jim Burke with the Cell Burke Associates, or the surveyors and the engineers for this particular job. You looked at the existing conditions, basically twenty-three, thirty-one, multi-family homes that were, were to replace. So here's the building that we're proposing. The major changes really consist of the drainage in this location, this remained the same, but we had the drainage originally added in to the drainage for nine ninety-nine Hancock Street. We felt that that particular time made sense to kind of just expand that particular drainage system that's already in the ground. City had some concerns with it, so instead we came up with a location of it right here. The advantage of that particular location is that it has about twenty to twenty-four feet of just coarse gravel, sand. We had the advantage of, take a look at that when nine ninety-nine was being built, had an exposed face. So we were able to change raws rate. The soils down here are, you know, not after it, and allowed us to get all the drainage in this particular location. We had a meeting with the city engineers, and they asked us to contain the entire twenty-five meter storm body that's generated off of this roof, that generated nine-six-foot diameter, twelve-foot deep leach pits. So it's a substantial system, takes on all the, all the storm water up to twenty-five years, and actually contains a lot of the hundred-year storm. To release the overflow for the hundred-year storm is a, what I call a level sprinter. Basically, it's a hundred-foot long pipe with, I would say, one-inch orifices drilled every two feet. So what does it, kind of mimics lander flow across the land, as opposed to, we originally had just a kind of a point discharge, and Quincy engineering had an issue with that with erosion, et cetera. So we came up with this scenario when they seek to let that. But everything else, as far as utilities go, off of Bridge Street, sewer water, we talked about that, but we'll be doing a fire float test, of course, but they believe everything is adequate to service the building. You have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Well, that's essentially the applicant's presentation tonight. Just to highlight, you know, to what Rob talked about, the, in addition to the, to the change in the building in that fashion by eliminating that fifth floor and the view from the National Park, the discussions that we had with Marion Peak and with the Hospital Hill Association, primarily with Marion, results from the materials that will be utilized for the building. And there was a significant amount of time spent on the material discussion, the types of materials that would be utilized. And as I indicated to a hospital neighbor and the hospital association, that will all be incorporated into the planning board's decision as it was in the final design plans, and that discussion will be ongoing. And we also are appearing before the Historic Commission on the twenty-third, at which time the Historic Commission will also weigh in regarding historic matters, things of color and material selection and things of that nature. So there's a number of layers of protection for the, for the, for the Adams National Park to ensure that there will, there will not be any negative impact upon them. And to highlight what Jim said as well, the removal of the drainage by treating, not no longer using the nine ninety-nine drainage system and pulling it back and dealing with drainage on the site is really just additional protections for the Furnishbrook Riverfront area, that there's no additional intrusion on that. And we actually obtained an order of condition from the Conservation Commission for the initial plan, and we're going to, and we'll be able to revise that now in a positive way, because we've now dealt with the drainage on the site. So I think it's a, there's been significant, you know, I think, progress made. The work, the level of work that goes into these matters with the level of review that takes place in the planning board is really important, I think, for the community to understand as well, because nothing, nothing is left without a level of review and, and comment. That's our, essentially, our presentation.
I have one question. The general from Interfaith. Okay?
Yeah, we've had, we've continued to have discussions with Interfaith Social Services. I don't anticipate...
Hi, I'm Jim Thorne.
Hold on one second. Hold on one second. Let's finish this part, and then I'll call you. Okay, thank you.
We have had, I think, continued discussions, but those discussions will be ongoing, because there'll be improvements made to the, to the Bridge Street and things of that nature, as well as part of our, the final conditions of approval from the planning department. And we'll have, we'll have, we'll, we'll have to have discussions, and we want to have discussions with our neighbors.
Thank you.
Frankel?
And just in your, in the explanation of revisions, where, where's the off, the new offset parking? Is that by perpetual ease?
Sure. Oh, the offset parking. The seven spaces are right down in this location here. There's the existing, if you go back, go back a little bit. So you can see the, what we're basically taking this driveway out and this garage and just kind of building that out a little bit.
Is that your property?
Yes.
Yeah, Boston property, the, the principals of Boston Property own that property. That's what gave them the opportunity. What was great about that, and I think what was, what the, what the planning department liked, is that it provided clean, clear visitor park.
I agree. I just wondered how, how we were dealing with it, and if it was by perpetual ease, or is it needed in with the property?
Yeah, and the deep, in the terms of that, we're still working out with the, the planning department, but it will likely be an easement with, with opportunities for extension, with review of the planning department's determined need. We think that the park, actually provided at one, one and a half spaces, believe it or not, will actually be more than sufficient to service this building. But if, in the event that those spaces are needed, it will, we can continue.
Thank you.
Anybody want to speak in favor of the project? In favor? Once, twice?
Yeah, I, we're, in the faith, we're not opposed to the project.
Go ahead, go ahead, please.
Good idea. I said it all before, your name and address.
My name, I'm Jim Thorne, seventy-eight grand place Milton. I'm the past resident, then the chairperson of the facilities committee for Interfaith. I heart back to what I've said in the past, parking is the big concern there, and it's also that flows to the city, correcting some of that parking on Thaya Street, where the residents have parked there constantly. I was by that, by Bridge Street today. We had about ten cars parked there, which took just about all the available parking that's available there on our end of the street. We're concerned about the, you know, the two parking lots now will have additional ingress and traffic from the guest parking. So this was, when we moved there twenty years, so years ago... So, this was, when we moved there twenty years, so years ago, we went there as a business, nonprofit business, but it's a business, and just like the other businesses in the area. We were growing. We have the, I believe it's a dental clinic, which is on the other side of us, and everybody that's there, as well as the businesses on Adams Street, depend upon that circulation through Bridge Street. So, we're dependent for our clients and customers at the food pantry and at our thrift shop into the evening on the counseling of the park. And that's our big concern is, is parking. And that we've had some discussions, our executive director has had, had some discussions with the owner, but we, we have nothing writing and no commitments of what, what the ultimate result will be. So, I want to reiterate and just say that we still have that real issue of concern. Thank you, Justin. Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor? Once, twice, three times, whatever, pause those.
Who wants to speak? Right. Name's Alexander, I'm a neighbor, live on Adams Street, one-five-six Adams Street. I, I'm not necessarily favorable or opposed, I just wanted to speak briefly here. And first, just thank them for the collaborative process they went through, both the Neighborhood Association, which I'm a member, and, and Mary Ann and National Park Service. But also, second, just to give the voice, just a general concern or, or point about this whole district that you have here, which this is now one piece that runs from, from the Woodward Tool and the Historical Society back to Furnishbrook along Hancock and Adams Street. This is a, I think, a holistic unit of parcels, and this is, this is going to be potentially quite a dynamic area in Quincy. And right up against what is very close, just on the other side, there is a large, is a series of very small streets and single-unit housing. That could be very mutually beneficial, and it could be a real asset to the city. It also could be quite, quite a massive difference if it's undone correctly. So, I think this is, I'm optimistic there'll be future development in this area, but just wanted to start the process and put on the record that we're all interested in a holistic plan, in working with the planning commission in the future of all of these issues. And again, thanks to these guys for the big collaborative work. Thanks.
Thank you. Want to follow the hearing? Over. Anybody opposed or undecided wants to speak? Opposed or undecided? Step right up and state your name and address.
I'm not necessarily opposed, so much as I have a question. But the trust, I need a name and address. I'm sorry, goes hands up, can I ask you a question? Not so much opposed, as I need a question answered before I can make the call. Long story short, I read what I view is a second round on peer review. It was dated in December. And a number of the things that Attorney Fleming has said have been taken care of were still under question by that draft that I saw. There were a number of other things mentioned, including concerns about connecting to the parking lot. It sounded like parking space is a trash plant, and concerns about threadway angle. My question to Mr. Fleming, is there been a third iteration of the peer review?
Yes, there were responses provided.
A third iteration?
Yes.
In response from the peer review board?
Yeah, and there's conversation going on all the time, that's why I talked about the level of review.
Again, I mean, is my read of the second document reasonable?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
There's still questions.
No comment?
Anyone else opposed or undecided? Twice, three times, about hearing over?
We don't have correspondence.
No correspondence, okay.
It's been around a long time, guys. Must not have died over there. Mr. Frankel, what do you think?
I follow the project. I appreciate all the work that's going in satisfying the National Parks, dealing with the MBTA. Part of our decision should be positive, I assume, will be to comply with all of the recommendations from peer review as it is ongoing. Obviously, parking is an issue. They've done a great job of providing a substantial amount of onsite parking. I understand the problems with egress on the satellite, but having the satellite parking for overflow is a substantial step, which I'm pleased to see been taken. Parking during construction is something that hasn't really been discussed, but I will presume that they'll be working with Interfaith and everyone else to make sure that that doesn't become a whole disaster. I think the area is, they're coming right down this area, and all the buildings are going to be really, really advantageous and a benefit to the city in that corner, in that corner should come around. And I think I'm in favor of seeing this continue for the rest.
I too. I think it's a great deal that you've shaped the flooring down to make the National Park Service happy. Huge attraction for the city. I hate to say anything, it happened, it happened to it. Offsite parking, I think, is a great idea, additional parking. It looks like you've really addressed the migration of any offsite water, required access to what you needed to do to the project. I think it's great for the area. I approve.
Sure. Water, things are, we go over, or we mention those considerations. I'm happy with the collaborative effort. I'd like to see it ongoing. I'll be staying.
I understand, whereas my power board members that, the reviews that have been conducted, total pair of views from the planning board, we have a minor piece in this, so I think, again, there's been a lot more of us than there ever might have.
Counsel, is, when is the next planning board? You haven't approved yet of a planning board, but you anticipate that you will.
That's, that's correct. Next planning board is actually tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night?
Right. The final recommendation will be, will be presented at that time.
I'd like to see it, do it all, uh, it did all, takes a decision that we need approval, you know, that we need approval, the planning board. I'm also a spectator, so get a chance for a motion.
By the way, the technology is great. Seeing, seeing what it would look like from the side is.
Yes, it is nice.
Makes life a lot easier.
You don't get those side kids right here.
I know, exactly.
Okay.
We got a, we got a case number sixteen dash fifty-eight, Boston Property, L L C, for a variance to construct a sixty-year multifamily residential building on the premises number twenty-three and thirty-one Bridge Street, Quincy. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to grant the requested variance. And subject to the approval of the planning board, and we, we require for the allowance of the requested variance to be administered.
A motion seen, no, in favor?
Second.
Second, sorry. A motion seen, no, in favor?
Aye.
Guys, have it.
Thank you very much.
Nice work.
Now, folks, I, I'm usually the vice chair here, and so I, I neglected to do something earlier in the meeting, which I want to take care of right now, except for you're hanging around here. Steve, you're trying to get, uh, this council.
For Garfield Street?
Sixteen dash zero eight one, Gabriel Holmes, Gary Gabriel, for a variance to construct a residential structure on Crescent Number, why are we, Garfield Street? What I'm saying is the board councillor wants to continue this.
Right, and we were somewhat chided in that level of dissent. But, one thing, my client underwrote tonight, will squirm, he tried to call in three different times, or three different occasions, never got a return call.
Well, I believe that, Phil, he can stay under oath. But, and I know, the only reason why I'm sort of leaning to granting this extension is because of the holidays.
The holidays?
Oh. You know, it's been tough to get good people.
Yeah, I understand.
So, if it's okay with you, I'd like to make a motion to give it as to what team. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Motion, right. Okay. We got a case number twenty-four.
Sixteen dash.
Twenty-four. Twenty-four.
Yeah. Oh, sorry.
January twenty-four.
Wait.
February fourteenth on twenty-eighth.
Oh, what is your next meeting?
January twenty-four.
Yeah. We're not getting that. So, do you want to continue until when?
Till fourteen.
On February.
Oh, the fourteenth of February?
Yes.
Seventeen. All right.
Got to do what you gotta do.
Frankel.
All right. We're okay? We got a case number sixteen dash eighty-one. Gabriel Holmes, Garrett Gabriel, for a variance to construct a new two-point-five-story residential structure on the premises number one-oh-eight Garfield Street in Quincy. I'd like to make a motion to reschedule the requested meeting until February fourteenth of two thousand sixteen.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
You're late. Second?
Second.
A motion seen, no, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? See you next month.
All right, Colonel.
Okay. Case number sixteen dash eight, uh, zero eight-two, Petrie L L C, John McCollman manager for a special permit, flood plane to construct a new six-story, seventeen-year residential building on the premises numbers thirty-one, Newbury Street, and twenty-six, Denmore Street, Denmore Street, Quincy. I have a letter from, a correspondence from the board councillor that he wants to delay this until two more weeks. I'm not sure exactly why, so you want to get the books that are here. So, we'll do that. So, that meeting, that year will be held on January twenty-fourth.
We got a case number sixteen dash oh eight-two, Petrie L L C, John McCollman manager for a special permit, flood plane to construct a new six-story, seventy-two-year, seventy-two-unit residential building on the premises number thirty-one and twenty-six, thirty-one Newbury Street and twenty-six Denmore Street in Quincy. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to reschedule the requested variance hearing until January twenty-fourth of two thousand seventeen.
Second? A motion seen, no, in favor?
Aye.
So, has it, so, get in touch with your board councillor if you like, and tell what you think. January twenty-fourth. Thank you. And now, our board of one sixteen dash zero eight-four, Yan Li Ron, for a finding to change the use of, from a travel agency for massage therapy on the premise number six-fifty-seven Adams Street in Quincy. Sorry they can stay here so long, but get the councillor.
Yeah, the list actually looked a lot, lot longer than the tenant's contract. I actually don't represent this lady. This lady is a tenant of my client who's a property owner, and what she would like to do is she'd like to withdraw the application. I've had previous conversations with Mr. Duca about this address. The address needs zoning, really, this is not really that it needs, and it's been explained to her. And we've convinced her to withdraw. I'm going to reapply on behalf of property owner.
Okay. That's over, see if you can go. Yes, yeah. Okay, we'll do that. Got it? A motion to withdraw without prejudice.
Okay, we got a case number sixteen dash eighty-four, Yan Li Ron, for a finding to change the use of, from a travel agency for massage therapy on the premises ninety-six-fifty-seven Adams Street, Quincy. I'd like to make a motion to withdraw this case at this time without prejudice.
Okay. Second? I have a question. Okay.
Well, they, 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 because of variance, they didn't help themselves.
So, they. You authorized to, to withdraw?
This, the office right here.
Okay.
She's authorized.
Okay, thank you. But you said you didn't. I just want to make sure we get the right question. Yeah.
You want to withdraw the case, right? Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes? She wants to withdraw?
A motion to withdraw. That's fine. Second? A motion seen, no, in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Joe. That leaves us with sixteen dash zero eight-three, ninety-four Liberty Street L L C, for a special permit. Hold on, hold on. Thank you. Let's jump ahead, we'll jump backwards. Sixteen dash zero eight zero, means I'm hungry, five, concern a second-story addition on the premises number twelve, Marymount Avenue. Is the advocate who I represented here.
Contract.
Okay. Here it is.
I'm Simon from Newbury, Kentucky. I'm the contractor for twelve, very much.
Tell us what you want to do.
We want to build a addition to the back existing, uh, porch, uh, the, the sit in the back, ready? Let's go. Put another living room on top.
Okay.
Just, just on the second floor?
Just on the second floor.
Any questions? Have the answer.
What's, what's on the first lot, maybe, in the back? Where you're going to go?
The bedroom.
It's a bedroom on the first floor?
Yes, sir.
Then you got to put a bedroom on the second floor?
Uh, living room.
Uh, a living room?
Yes, sir.
Is that, so it's currently a full family?
Yes, sir.
They're just going to extend out of the back and add?
Oh, the, the back door is staying, we're just going to go on top of the existing.
Okay. No further questions, Mr. Chairman?
Parking's dramatic, they're just, this is a distinct parking?
Yes, but they had, um, the egress for the second floor is that, it's right on top of the first floor bedroom. It goes on top, they have a deck on top of the roof that goes down. So, we're gonna put the second floor on and extend it, the egress back, and have the stairway go down. Instead of be on the roof, be on the side of the house, the back of the house.
So, what is the hardship here?
I don't know. In fact, it's just a roof, it's a zone.
Yeah, it's, it's like, it's big even on this, yeah.
No, I'm just confirming, it's been.
Oh, yeah.
Same, same thing.
Any questions?
No.
Sit there. Anybody else wants to get a take? Once, twice, three times, put a, put a hearing over. I got a letter from the, uh, the W, and they have no comments at this time. Anybody opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? Once, twice, three times, there are five, two, and over.
Maintaining the same non-conformance, there plenty of parking, doesn't look like there is anything. But more people will be living there than with ours.
Yeah, simple way of moving egress on the problem.
In favor?
So am I.
Mr. Chairman? We got a case of sixteen dash oh eight oh, Mi Zou Tang, for a finding to construct a second-story addition on the premises number twelve, Marymount Avenue, Quincy. I make a motion to grant the requested finding.
Second? Second? A motion seen, no? A motion seen, no?
Aye.
Opposed? We got it.
Thank you.
Now. Sixteen dash zero eight four, Yan Li Ron, for a finding to change the.